Today's fancy man, okay, school committee.
So recorded and you'll see that's the last one. So I apologize, not sharing with that.
All right, well, welcome to the February first regular meeting of the class of school committee. We have a very special meeting today because we're at the Metco headquarters and we've got a agenda where we will learn a lot about what's going on with Metco and how Metco enhances the quality of learning in our district. So we're really excited to be here. And first I will do the customary roll call. Since we're in a slightly different agenda, I'm just gonna go down the line. Mr. Carr.
President.
Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Ms. Aunge. Ms. Recalhage. And Mr. Dial, present, I'm here. That means we have a unanimous forum and now we don't have an American flag for our pledge allegiance. But we know what it looks like, so here we go. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so again, we're here at the special meeting. I'm not going to use up a lot of airtime introducing things because I think the agenda will speak for itself. But I will open the floor up for public comment. Again, this is the area of the agenda where we invite public comment for things that are not on the agenda. If you do have comments on things that are on the agenda, feel free to let us know, but please reserve that comment for the agenda item. And so with that, I will pause and see if we have any public comments. In just a couple of moments. Hearing none, we'll move on to our next agenda items, which is our esteemed invited guests. And so I will turn it over to, and I'm going to mispronounce your last name. Arbahe Thomas. Millie, Arbahe Thomas, the Metco president, CEO. And she's going to take us through a presentation, giving some Metco history and talking about the Metco initiative, so. Off to you.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to Roxbury, welcome to Boston. It's always a pleasure when school committees and school leaders choose this location to actually have a place to me. We think it's very special for not only us to be in your community and be educated, but for you to take the opportunity to come and see where our students are coming from, learn about the history of the program, and to learn more intimately the things that we are working on. So thank you Lance, thank you Pat, for actually the whole school committee who's coming here today. I'm gonna have, I have a presentation that I normally do that is for a longer period of time. So I'm going to just take a couple of slides of the most important parts because I want to talk to the people here in the audience today that are watching a Facebook Live. Very, very high end and you have it. So you guys hear a little bit about this beautiful space that you see here today, which is our new exhibit hall and the history of the Mecca program. We built this at the, last year when we had a grand opening of our new location that we moved after being endemic for over forty years. And basically came here in the community in Roxbury where the program really started. And I've always said that if we could find a space that had an available additional room where we can actually showcase the history of the program that I run to be able to do that. And luckily, this was the landlord's room. And then after we moved in and finished everything upstairs, the landlord came and said, you know what? I'm gonna go to another location. Do you want the first floor? So it was a dream come true to be able to do this and we are a historical program. So basically, all of our history exists in Northeastern University. That is where our archives are actually stored. So we spend the summer with our teenagers of the Mecca program calling what we call hacking the archives. And they actually went and read through all of the literature, extracted the best photos and came up with our communications director at that time, came up with his timeline, timeline of our program. So I want to have the opportunity to say, to show you a little bit about that. And Pat, you are apparently the expert on Zoom these days.
It's a scary thought, but if you share your screen, you'll see on, if you go to Zoom and share.
We left for the tour, excuse me guys, we just finished doing a tour of the building, so probably when I step away.
Don't worry.
Real time problem solving, everyone.
Had it all set up, but we went to do a nice tour upstairs and then I closed my computer.
And then the tour was excellent. It's a, it's a beautiful facility to have here in Roxbury. You store lots of stored resources and so have its hidden. For those of you in the community who remember are peeling on the hybrid models of, of virtual meetings. Well, no, this is, this is, this is child's play now.
It's easy for you to say compared to where we were then.
We are coming.
I'm gonna make you co-host.
And I have to start my video, you know, the show up presentation, right?
Um, you should, you, you do not, yeah, you do start your video. Actually, you don't even need to do that. You can start the video. Just do the presentation. Share screen.
All right, thank you, Facebook Live. Here we go. I just took up pretty much of your time.
No, we've got much worse.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so again, I'm going to just skip a handful of slides just for the sake of time. Happy to share this afterwards. People want to look at it and happy to also offer that cohesive community a full presentation of this virtual that we can have people join later on as well. But for those of you that don't know the details of the Mecca program, it was started in nineteen sixty-six and it was a program that was started by the parents both here and in the suburbs, which is what I love about the Mecca program, that it was something that was grassroots. It was not something that was mandated. It wasn't anything that someone forced upon us. It wasn't legislated that made us do this. It was literally parents. And I'm gonna say a little bit about that later. And the purpose of the program is to address racial imbalance and racial segregation. So the segregation that's happening here in the city of Boston, which were more segregated than how they were back in the days when the program started and then racial isolation in the suburban communities. Right now, we have thirty-one hundred students in the Mecca program. And we actually are thirty-three communities. And as you can see there, you can see where all of our communities are actually located. We do have some interest right now near you, who has it, we have actually the whole community who has reached out, both the superintendent, the school committee chair, and the state rep. Joan, yes, has reached out that they actually might want to join another community. But that is not the only community that has reached out after George Floyd. We've actually received at least ten different communities, new communities who want to join the Mecca program. So we are exploring how can we actually expand the program. This is just a, a little snapshot of like just the racial demographics of the community, both these students here in Boston and then the majority of the Mecca communities. Racial imbalance is anything when you're talking about at least fifty percent is one group. But this is all of the medical suburbs. This is all of the suburbs. You just kind of like summarize, but this one is for you here. So, sorry, so this is cohesive. So as you can see, really racially balanced and isolated there. So you guys a hundred percent qualified for being part of the Mecca program. Okay? So definitely that's one of the things that we try to address through that, through the program. A little bit about how the program is run for those of you that may not know. So basically, there was a law that was created in Massachusetts that is right here in this wall behind you, nineteen sixty-five, right be, right behind Leslie. And it basically talked about a, the state rep from Roxbury, Royal Bowling, who basically wanted to do something about the Brown Board versus Board of Education ruling that came out years before, at least ten years before this date. And notice that Massachusetts wasn't doing anything to actually address racially balanced schools. So he created and proposed the Racial Imbalance Act. He was the rep from this community from Roxbury, right this area where we're located now. And that basically is the law that actually supports the Mecca program. This is why the legislature has to do something to support the Mecca program financially because it is a law. And this is currently the only program in the state of Massachusetts that addresses the racial imbalance of our schools. The only one. And basically what is said is that if you don't try to integrate schools in Massachusetts and you are public school, you can risk losing your state funding. Which some of you might understand that's three of chapter seventy dollars. So right now, so that is the law that protects the Mecca program and the Mecca program is funded in three different ways. Really in one big one, but we always throw in there that every single other school in Massachusetts has chapter seventy money. So whatever chapter seventy money you get for your students in Cohasset, you also get the same exact amount for your Mecca student enrollment. In some cases, that equals to be a lot of money when you're talking about the larger communities that knew and were about four hundred students. We are talking very chunk of money that comes into that. And then also, if you, if you identify as ELL and special ed, Leslie, you know more than I do about all of these different you know. No. Or we don't have any qualifications, we need to later. It's a bit with the categories and you know, there's type of different title monies that are available according to what you know other needs people have. But the real chunk of our money comes, I mean, the real program, the Mecca program is funded by our Mecca line item, which is right now we're twenty-nine point four million dollars. Actually, just five years ago, the Mecca program was twenty million dollars. And right now we have twenty-nine million dollars in our, that we get every single year to fund that thirty-one hundred students. And right now there's a per pupil reimbursement of eight thousand four hundred three hundred and fourteen dollars per student. The reason why the Mecca program is called a marginal seat program, that is how the state refers to us as the type of program that we're categorized as, is that sometimes people say, well, how come we're not getting the full amount of per pupil? I don't know how you, how much a per pupil is in Cohasset. Twenty, about twenty something, yeah, twenty thousand. So the Mecca program reimburses the district. So we basically, you know, pay for this grant for our students to be there. And that helps to pay for the director in programming and obviously the most important cost, which is transportation. But it is not a dollar for dollar match on purpose because it is a marginal seat program, meaning that the seats already, there was empty seats in your school district that would otherwise go unfilled. There was already buildings that already reconstructed. There was already teachers that were hired. So in no Mecca community do we actually tell people, we'll build a new school because of us or open up another classroom or hire more teachers. So that is what is called according to the Department of Education, marginal seat, marginal costs. So that is why it's never gonna be, you know, a dollar for dollar. But you know, those seats would otherwise go unused. And now you're filling it with diversity and you're getting a grant for it too. And as you know, some, most programs actually pay for diversity to come in, like in colleges and job and workforces. Well, in this case, we're also providing some financial support for the program to exist. I always love to explain that. There's always some talk around finances at Mecca. So win-win for everybody, right? Our students getting a great education, you're getting some diversity, you're getting a diverse wonderful staff over here that has lived through your program for many years, supporting it, and everybody wins. And there's some money that comes, that comes with it. So a lot of times people refer to the Mecca program as a bus program. I hate it when people say that every time I spent a year five, I'm the job five years ago, actually this, this week. And basically, every time I was getting interviewed, they would say the busing program, the busing program of Boston, and I hate that reference. Busing is just how we get to the school. We're really a different type of movement. We're not moving buses, we're moving people. Okay, so.
Like what you said, not just transportation, transfer me.
Yes, exactly. Basically for that, you were transforming communities, exactly. And how are we doing that? I mean, by the type of the Mecca program is actually there. We are actively looking at ways to address appreciative diversity. We're celebrating different cultures. We're celebrating different holidays. We are breaking down racial barriers through our trains for teachers. We're looking at our audits and looking at curriculums and actually we make them more inclusive. We're all learning together from each other through friendships and for being in a class next to somebody else that looks different from us. We're no longer learning from the news or from what other people have tapped in down to us, but really from those authentic friendships. So that's so important because of all of the stereotypes and racism that's been happening, you know, forever. But also more recently, because you look at a certain group of people and you make your own bias based on what the news is saying. But now you say, okay, well, that's a friend. And I don't mean even just students of color. I mean even us as people of color, how we view our white counterparts as allies and as friends. So it's very important. Then lastly, that we're prepared for a global economy. A workforce that's going to be diverse, that we don't know which jobs any of us are going to be holding and what doors and opportunities we can open up for people because we had a Mecca program there. So I always say that the Mecca program is special. The membership in the Mecca program is special, that people really should want to do this and actively be looking with a different set of eyes and how they do business as usual. I don't expect any other school in Massachusetts to be doing what we're doing because they're not Mecca. We're Mecca, so, Mecca, so that means we are better. We're better than all the other school systems around. And what are we doing today? So I wanted to do a little bit about our office here at HQ, the headquarters office of the Mecca program. We focus on four areas in this office. We are the main entity that actually does all of the recruitment and referral for all of the new families coming in. That is our major role. We also do student and family support services. And now it's been a little bit about what we're doing. We also are the conveners of all of our actual community, all of our districts. Just last week, we had a beautiful retreat at Gillette Stadium with over ninety school leaders. And we basically convened everybody to talk about how to make Mecca better and our communities better. And also we always talking about integration and really being part of that conversation around our states, around the nation. For example, some of you know Jonathan Posel, the writer from Savage inequalities, who's writing a book that's coming out this year. And just yet that I was interviewing with him and his staff regarding a chapter that's dedicated to the Mecca program. You know, we're also talking to the, to the, across the nation with the National Coalition of School Diversity. And we meet with them every single month and talk about how do we do federal policies on a federal level and federal funding. We're working on that to try to do more integration funding. So there's, I also meet with our other two sister programs, which are in New York and in Connecticut that are just like us. And basically, we meet every single month to share best practices. So really trying to be a leader in school integration. So I'll just quickly just say through these here, basically, this is part of our, a little bit of our student services that we provide. I was just telling the group here that I love acronyms. So as you can see, the acronym is over here. We have the BEACH program, which is Boston Equity Action Teams, where our teenagers are actually doing part of that upstairs that you guys saw, which means teams talking about equity work and how they can actually move, you know, move the needle in different areas and share their experiences. We have the PLAM program and two of the girls that are here today presenting, we're part of the PLAM program. That is our paid jobs program where we actually prepare kids, teenagers to become achievers and to be ready for the workforce. And we pay them to actually have different jobs. And this year, for the first time, we have some jobs at the district level. So instead of having them come to here, we leave them there at the school different, so they can work. And then we also do career development with a staff member that we have here. We have Mecca University. We have a summer school that we're running as well. Obviously, I just said that we do all of the recruitment. We have no hashtag. This is actually what you saw when you first came in. This is our mural. And these are actual people of our students at different communities. So we had to get creative with the pandemic and with the racial climate during recruitment in the last few years. It was a little bit tough, you know, putting your baby into a bus to go far away, not know what the racial climate was gonna be. And we started coming up with this hashtag called hashtag work the ride. Yes, it might be some obstacles and challenges being part of the Mecca program, but it's also very rewarding. And there's so many, so many beautiful things that can come out of it. And again, I always had to stress, I'm talking about both sides. Okay, yes, we're getting an amazing, excellent education, but also the suburban students are also getting a sculpture in the school communities being challenged to do better at the school system. So it is worth the ride for everybody involved. In terms of convening our communities, I mean, Elise actually, she actually just got one of these grants yesterday. We actually do a couple of things. We have Mecca presented. You haven't had an opportunity to keep a lookout for those things. We go to the theater downtown at the Paramount Theater, the Huntington Theater. And we basically choose shows of cultural relevance. And we basically go and have super discounted tickets from like ninety to a hundred dollars down to ten. And basically, we just come and we do a Mecca night. We invite everybody who wants to purchase a ticket. And we go and we have a reception. We meet the cast. We have food and we talk about what we just experienced with our performing arts. In addition to that, in the same grant funding that we have, by the way, Mecca HQ is a nonprofit. So as a result of that, we actually can apply for grants and funding, which is why I was asking what this still has to need. Because we are able to support in another way besides our state funding as well. And we do cultural mini-grants. And these are things happening at our school districts where we paid for the performers and the spoken word and the poetry and the artists to come in and do something. And Elise is gonna have something going on, as she can tell you more about it later. And then the newest thing that we've added when we moved to this new space is called Boston, is called the, the actual tour that we do in this community. And basically, we come and do a tour of this exhibit hall, which people come here literally and leave with tears. Like I've seen today, there was a person that was in charge of the Timothy Smith network. And he was pointing at this picture right here with the bus, because that's my grandmother. It was really deep. It was really deep. So you know, these are all of the, so basically people are, I just, I just had the head, the CEO of the Boston Girls Club here last week too. And he was, and I remember when I was being, when my, when my bus was being, you know, stolen when my house was firebombed. So there's a lot of history here and we wanted to make sure that people remember why this program started so that we can remember what her potential still is to make it even better. We have not fulfilled the whole vision and mission of the program of transforming school communities. I know, kind of running out of time. All right, so this is our, for those of you that didn't come to the tour, this is a little bit of what they saw. This is the upstairs. So we have a new facility here by New B and Square where the people can come and use the space for meetings, for training, for education. We've done it for school committee meetings. And this is actually our tours. And these are our teenagers. We train our teenagers to be the tour guides. So they actually got paid, that trainer, everything here. Not only this exhibit hall in the history of their program, but just historical site right around our community and to make them feel really good because they also said that they spent so much time commuting that they actually didn't know the history of their own community. So this is a really special program. So I invite Cohasset to take a day and come over. We actually are contemplating a new grant right now with another partner. So we can, instead of people just coming on their own and signing up for our tours, we have three tours, state of integration. So you guys are more than welcome to come, but also to try to do it specifically with this, so that we can rent the bus. People actually board the bus there and come over here. So we're in that grant right now. Integration advocacy here, we see is the State House. And basically, if I'm gonna talk to you guys, I need you all on Facebook Live, on Zoom, everybody here. We need to show up at the State House. We have, all of our funding is state funding. So every year we go to the State House. We haven't done it for three years because of that pandemic. And we meet with our legislators and we have a big lobby advocacy day with speakers and students. And sometimes people come in buses from their communities and we fill up the State House to let them know, like, you need to fund Mecca. We've been really fortunate to get nine million dollars or eight million dollars more in the last five years since I got here. But I, I think I'm, I feel like we're, we're gonna run out of luck and do the shopping big numbers. That's a lot of money in a little bit of time. So that's us advocating after George Floyd, all the communities came here in Boston to say a statement of solidarity after that. Literally, a lot of school committees adopted anti-racist policy, anti-racist committees. DEI directors started to get hired within Mecca all after this event. And then these locals, they're just telling you that we have become bigger than just integrating our school communities. People have reached out to us to offer us scholarships for identifying a diverse student for these programs. So you know, the other school is the school where you go to the Bahamas and you spend the summer studying marine biology. We're on our third year sending students there for free at no cost. The Rex program is at MIT, real estate, real estate development. Emerson Colleges gave us a three, four-year scholarship with Bloom Board in books in meal thing for four years for a Mecca student. And Boston University School of Journalism, every year, let's send somebody to be there in the dorms living and studying journalism. And the YMCA is there, stay away at their, their sleepaway camp in New Hampshire, Winniferg Stucky in the lake. And they usually didn't have any diversity. And so we got a big grant of six hundred thousand dollars from the Lynch Family Foundation. And now the program literally has doubled in diversity because we fill up almost all the diversity in buses in the summer program. And we've covered the cost from two thousand, three hundred dollars. So, so, so our integration is bigger than, than just Mecca now. We've really become to be a presence for people that are looking for diversity into other educational and enrichment programs. So this past year, we just got this grant from the state. In addition to our line item, they gave us five hundred thousand dollars to do racial equity work. And that is what we met with at the state of last week to decide how to use this money. And this will be able to actually tap into this money. Once we decide with the committee, we're gonna use it. And the goal is to do a few things for all of Mecca together. Like people are asking me for a sort of justice training and making sure that every school district has certified, trained for sort of justice staff that can work on disciplining. And then after that, we can maybe do individual grants for any additional work. So that is actually being done right now. And then for you to state the date that on March twenty-first of this year, this is one of our last advocacy days is when we're gonna go to the State House. So I'll be working with our Lisa and all of the different Mecca directors to make sure that every community is represented there. And I think I want to end just with, with showing you this video here. Because for those of you that are not here to see and feel what's in these walls, this also is gonna show you a little bit of our history and how the Mecca program was a program that started because parents wanted more for their students. Black families here in Boston wanted better education. Suburban parents wanted to be have diversity and how people came together through all of these injustices and lack of access. And people saying no to us here in Boston and how the suburban community said yes and opened up the doors to start the Mecca program. So that's fifty-seven years ago, I think, to all. All right, so there we go. Let's hope that everything sounds okay. Maybe somebody can let us know if it's working or not. Oh, there's no music. Oh, because we're in session alone. Remember that we, we, me, myself. Oh, my zone.
Something, the speakers, they keep coming through the speakers and.
I just unmuted myself. Now we'll send it to you guys. As they please play music. About the music, it's not the same.
Yeah.
So I think, whoa, don't see all of my other work.
Stuff, stuff, yeah.
So I will stop there. Just got the timing, um. And love to take any other thoughts or questions from either you guys or the rest of the audience.
For, uh, for public comment, just, um, you know, open it up to the, uh, the committee for any questions or comments, um. Mr. Scarlett, let's start with you.
So, um, thank you for having us for July Peter. The, um, I grew up in the city of Boston, born in nineteen sixty eight. And, uh, and, uh, my, uh, my, the high, the grade school I was going to. I think it's still here. It sits at the head of the Wayne McCaswell Art. It was being built at the time. And I went to a different school because of what happened in here. So I went to a community based school in Brooklyn. And my best friend, my mom was African-American. It was a challenging time. So it's amazing how much she done did. So happy to be here and we're so happy to have young people as part of our community. Thanks for having us.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. We've been for having us. Wonderful organization. Just to get educated on how it started, to know that it started from parents, you know, we're all parents. And, uh, I think we made some really good things together as well. And, uh, to know that it started from that. To see the advocacy of like a state rep. And one of the things about Massachusetts, we're a common, so whatever's good for you is good for us. And, um, we really gotta figure out and educate on how a citizen can write a bill. You know, a citizen can write a bill in Massachusetts. It's where a common, there's only three common ones, Virginia and Washington, D C. Yeah. And what that does is it just shows how you can take an idea and put it into action. And to see this evolve into such a wonderful program. It's, it's a proud to be one.
Um, thank you so much for having us in here today. I loved being able to finally get in here. Because we've been talking about this for a long time and, um, ever since Pat and Leslie have come in for the opening, it's really, feels really special to be here. So thank you for welcoming us. Um, I'm curious with the lobby day, is it, you know, how, how do you kind of gather? People on that day is an all-day event like communities?
Us, yeah, very good question. So, um, we have actually, we have a, um, a lobbyist. So H Q pays for a lobbying firm. So we have a lobbying firm called Childhood Consultant and they're in charge of helping us put together that day. They will book up agreements for every single Metro district. So there will be a schedule for the day. It starts at nine, I think it starts like at nine thirty in the morning that we actually arrive. I guess that will then we'll have a program for about an hour. Where like we said, that our champions of our program will say a few words. And then there'll be a couple of speakers, perhaps a mental performance, um, right now, one of the school district that actually has a step group. Asked me if they can bring the step team over there to actually like really lighten up the State House that day with our presence. In the past, we've had, um, like the Wailing Band play classical music while all of this stuff was happening. So we rented a great hall already, um, at the State House for Metro for the day. We'll have about an hour, two hour and a half of programming. And then after that, we all split up and there'll be a schedule and everybody will go visit their state rep and their state senator. So there'll be singles done. We have a lobbying firm that will do that. And basically districts either, um, most of the time districts, at least I've taken longer than me. But sometimes they actually rent a bus for the day, like the Metro bus will come back. And you'll like get community leaders, residents and students to come in. It's not just Metro. Remember, we just, we can't have just Metro students be the ones to show up. Because we're visiting your legislators, seeing that's the ones that vote for them and they're the ones that have to decide that they want it in their town. So basically, most people come in a bus, um, or drive up and then basically we spend the day until about one in the afternoon. And we'll have like two appointments for every single community, whether it's state rep and the state senator. And then for the Boston side, there will also be additional appointments to meet the Boston legislators as well. I think that's a very good, um, and yeah, and basically that legislative is waiting for us that day to send, save the date. And they basically will meet with us and whatever comes up in conversation, we will have a one page to let you know what our ask is. So you wouldn't go alone with this. And you know, right now, our last ask was twenty nine point five million dollars. And we still haven't decided our manual amount, but I'm leaning towards like, like twenty one million, like twenty one, twenty five million dollars.
You should go up.
Twenty nine. Thank you. One, thirty, maybe thirty one million, but it's, it's kinda crazy. Cause at some point they're gonna say, you've got nine million dollars in four years and your program is the same size. And why have we changed? That's what I'm afraid is gonna happen. But yes, that's the plan. So we'll have a one page. We'll have talking points. We'll be your legislator. And, um, and we will also have a bus leaving from this location to the Boston parents to be able to just not have to worry about parking. So thank you for that question. We have to show up in big numbers.
Really, really well done, Dan.
It helps to have a lobbyist.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Well, Mr. Ray Thomas, uh, thank you so much for having us. Um, it's been a privilege and, um, it's great to work with, uh, in my four years, like maybe so far. Little one, four years, uh, work with our Metro director, uh, Mrs. Carl, who is a special person. And, um, I, I. The reason the Metro program, uh, to me is, is so valuable is that it is, if embraced properly. It is, um, it is a bilateral mutually beneficial program, right? So a lot of people, I think, mistakenly think of it as a program that provides an advantage to, uh, students. Who live in Boston to, you know, have the, the privilege of attending a school outside of Boston. That's not what the program strives to achieve in my eyes. Uh, and, and in Cohasset, we have, as of late, under the leadership of Dr. Sullivan, placed, uh, enormous. I think emphasis on what's been referred to as cultural competency. And to me, that term is just, um. Something that tries to, um, underscore the importance of. Understanding everyone's perspectives, um, in any sort of, uh, topic of education. And, and if you're able to understand more perspectives, you're able to form more informed one yourself. And the Metro program assists us, um, as we, as we strive to achieve that objective. Because what it does is incorporates, um, a lot of different perspectives. We can see that pie chart that we threw up there on Cohasset. And it's very homogenous community, right? And, um, you know, cultural and ethnic background is, is, is one, um, you know, major factor when you're considering. What drives the formation or formulation of different perspectives, but it's a major one. And, um, for a community like Cohasset to benefit from, you know, the perspectives of individuals who, you know, come from different backgrounds and grow in different communities. It's hugely valuable to us. So in that way, Cohasset benefits greatly as well. It's not just, uh, individuals were able to, you know, benefit from, uh, wonderful education in our school. But also, uh, the residents and students of Cohasset and the teachers of Cohasset, ministers of Cohasset, they can benefit from. The different perspectives that are brought to it from through Metro program. And thus enabling us to truly, really embrace that, that objective of trying to form culturally competent district. So, um, that's why I find it so important. And, um, you know, I, 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 I hope that we, we seek to constantly improve and expand the program. Um, we have wonderful leadership in Cohasset program. Um, I wonder, I, my question to you is, um. I just, there's thirty two. Thirty three districts, okay. Um. The answer to this question may be obvious and I'm just not seeing. So I, when I was looking at the, at the, the timeline, I noticed that basically, I think like thirty or so districts were. Established as of nineteen seventy seven. So that means only three additional districts have been added in, in, in all of that time. And I wonder, does that primarily due to geographic constraints or what, what do you think? Um, and again, the answer might be obvious. So I'm sorry if I'm just not seeing. I'm, I'm just asking because it's something that's enormously valuable. So I'm wondering why, what, what the obstacle is to expansion.
First, I just wanted to say that you, your summary of the purpose of the program and why Cohasset is part of it is exactly why typically we're around preaching to people. And this is why this is so important. So thank you for summarizing it so eloquently about dual benefits, you know? And when this, I love this picture right here. This picture right here is with Batsen. She is our founding mother of the Metro program. And this is Leon Trilling, the chair of the school committee. That's why I love school committees. When I learned the actual history of the Metro program, I fell in love with school committees because you guys have so much power. You guys have like the power to say yes or no, like whatever you want, seriously. And then this guy, Leon Trilling, heard what was happening in Boston. You see that meeting right here, nineteen fifty three? That's why I lost some of this time because this is the chair of the school committee in Boston, Louise Hicks. Some of you guys might have heard that name, something that we didn't really like here too much, you know? Um, and this was with Batsen in this, this nineteen sixty three, when she realized that her kids were getting a substandard education in Boston. Because her school was up the street from another school that was a primarily white neighborhood in Boston. We're talking same mayor, same school committee people. And she said, how come I don't have a science project for my daughter, but my friend up the street does? That's why I love telling this story, right? And she went to Louise Hicks and she basically told her like, I, you know, why can't we do some integration? So we can benefit from the communities that, these schools in our own town up the street that had better school system. And every single time, um, that, um, Batsen went to me with her, she asked for three committee, school committee meetings that year. And every time she mentioned the word segregation, Louise stopped the meeting. And she said, if you mention that word again, I'm gonna have to stop with you. Came again, invited her again. She persisted. She mentioned the word again, she stopped the meeting. And basically Boston didn't listen. Boston didn't listen. Look, from sixty three to seventy four, when forced busting happened, we are a voluntary school, um, disintegration program. Volunteer, which is what I love about it. People are doing this because they want to. And then Lee, um, Leon Trilling heard what was happening in Boston and he said, why don't you come over? So the dual benefits credit is basically right by there. He didn't call Louise over because she want, he wanted to give the Boston students a better education. Everybody has a different, a different desire to be part of Metro. And I always said, that's okay. Our Boston parents are looking for a great education. The suburban families are looking to support it to diversity. That's fine to have different motivations. We're still working it together, you know? And that's what he said. He said, I don't want my kids to grow up without any diversity. I have some seats. Come and take them. So to answer your question, um, in nineteen sixty eight was the last time that we had the influx of the Metro program. In nineteen sixty, the program doubled in size. And what happened in that year was that MLK was assassinated. So, you know, just like with any civil rights movement, all of this bust was happening here. Boston was trying to do something, mission and balance back. Broke into the movement. Everybody wanted to join. Then, um, um, Martin Luther King got assassinated. And then all of these other communities say, well, we wanna have something, certainly that we do back in our communities. How can we join the Metro program? I say this because in that world over there directly across from me in twenty twenty, when George Floyd was killed. I got similarly about eleven calls from people that wanted to join the Metro program. I don't know historically why the Metro program had not expanded before my time. I've only been here for five years. But what I do know is that I developed a pretty process for that to happen. Because after studying the lobbying and the money and how everything works. I believe that the way, the way to expand the Metro program is you have to have three entities. You have to have the school committee say yes. I wouldn't even entertain a conversation without the school committee, that superintendent. And basically your state legislator, because this is fully, fully, fully state funded and we, and we fulfill a state law. So if I have that combination, which is why I'm entertaining in the conversation with child right now, that's the reason I am talking to them. It's because all three of them said, I wanna talk about Metro. In other cases, when I got those eleven calls up to George Floyd, it was either community members, human rights commission, you know, one person in the district. I just said, I wanna know how to join the Metro program. So what would it require would be that we have to get more funding. Like that's what would happen. Because I made a promise to the districts and Elisa know that I said, I'm not gonna bring somebody in with the same pot of money. That means everybody's per people goes down. So it's a financial thing right now. And also because instead of doing the anti-racist work, that we got that money to do racial equity work. That basically is that whoever says that they wanna be part of Metro, we will do two things for a year. One, you have to do preparation and do some racial equity work and now equity audits and do some training with your staff. To really get prepared to receive our students a year later. But the legislature would have to work with me and the lobbyists and the school community to try to get us an increase in our Metro budget. So there's a plan. Actually, that's what I would like to leave behind for the Metro program before I retire in a couple of years. So this is one of, one of my goals is to really leave it increased. I mean, we have the interest, you know, so.
That's, that's good to hear. That's a good goal. And so that's the extent that, uh, that, that I, and I won't speak to my colleagues. But I'm sure that they would join in my, uh, in my willingness to serve as a reference to any districts that might be interested or school committees that are considering it. You know, we're, I, I'm, I'm more than happy to. I'm sure my colleagues are as well, but I won't speak to them. I'll speak my, myself.
We're also spending internally right now. So we just actually expanded by a hundred seats last year in three communities. And this year we have a hundred and sixteen seats requests from about seven communities right now. So basically that's where I came up with that two million, cause one million would be for expansion. The other million would be to spread across for inflation. But I think that the reason also why it hasn't happened is because this is a grassroots movement. There is no place where you go to the, I mean, I talked to the Department of Education. I work with them every week. We have a committee that we need to talk about everything with Metro. But there's not a system. There's not an application. This doesn't exist. This was all grassroots. Let's somebody raise their hand. Some legislators got involved. Some parents said, we need this. And then the program happened. So there's not even an application process for more communities. But we're developing that right now. Cause I'm working closely with the state on that. But it doesn't exist. It is all grassroots. So that's why when enough people have, say it, and then somebody comes up with some extra money, um, then we can do it.
Um, I think that, uh, you know, based on, on her, her platform and what she's said to date, I think that you do have a friend in the governor's office as well. So she's, I think, Governor Healy, it is absolutely, uh, enormous proponent of, uh, both diversity and education and recognition.
Civil rights. She was actually, you know, had, had a commission that was supporting him back in a Metro. When it had some kind of legislative, um, pickups some years ago, she was actually ready to defend it.
So I think you have a friend now in the, uh, in the executive suite there in the State House as well, which can hurt in terms of funding, right? So, uh, well, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Um, I will just, uh, add, as my colleagues.
Um I will just uh add, as my colleagues have, the uh the thanks for the benefits that we received of the district from the medical program. It is often. And you know, we 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 talk about it as a committee. Um but I'm relatively new to the committee. It's my first and a half year. Um I've learned a lot and you know, learning a lot about the Medco program and the benefit it brings. You know, part of the reason we do this meeting, part of the reason we did the other reading where we had uh then and now. Is to help educate our community about the benefits of of the Medco program to to our students. And uh it's it's really powerful and uh you know, these are these are hard issues that we face as a as a society. And so this is a. This is a great solution to uh to to help, you know, deal with some of those and and address some of the things. One of the questions I have, uh you you mentioned in your presentation about uh about recruiting, we saw your recruiting record. I guess, what is the recruiting process? And do you have, you have more people interested in the program than you have seats in? How do you find seats with districts? I guess, what can you tell us a little bit about that to my listeners?
Great question. Um wow, you're a really good committee. You're very insightful. I place my blind again. So yes, so basically we always get about three times the actual seat that we have available. So that's historically um. And since I've been here, right? Um because we have got rid of a wait, a long wait list. Um there used to be a witness here before that was manual and it also was antiquated. So that waitlist had people that had already been enrolled, people that were even alumni already. People that moved out of the city of Boston. So it's a dual process. First, the district agents receive availability. So that Elisa will put in a request. We have a form online and basically she says, okay, I have to look in. And talking to the leadership and looking at registrars, they will find and tell us how many seats have available. Typically, it automatically fills whoever graduates or whoever drops out of the program for whatever reason, people move out or something's a little more. So that's automatically your allotment. So every district has an allotment already according to the Department of Education. That's been historically kind of said that every year roughly. Um I forget how how much is your allotment? Fifty fifty. So usually you guys stay like right around there.
Fifty six.
Fifty six.
Forty six.
Forty six, forty six to fifty, you know, goes up the number one or two here and there. So basically she will let us know when when she identifies some of the seat availability initial for in a request. We take applications starting in the fall and we work first lottery in December. So we just put our lottery with seven hundred applications. And um that's only our first lottery we do four, we do every quarter. So basically that seat um that enrollment in medical usually is about four hundred seats. In all of the entire medical program and we average about twelve hundred applications in the recent couple of years. So basically, we've done, we've done a lot of changes in the last couple of years. So basically, we um we now go online. We now, you don't have to come in when you're a baby, you don't need your school age ready to make a sit at decision. Um you no longer have to um. Um be the first one in line. So it's a good deal. On the last day, you have the equal opportunity to get selected. And then this year we're doing something for the first time that's new. Two things. One is we reduce the application, the paper for people to apply. Because we started giving issues of equity around people that were applying, they were supposed to apply to charter schools, I didn't have to put my name on the list. But for medical, we have, we need like three years of school records, references. I can um um discipline records, attendance records, and it was a big issue that we can't be talking about doing anti racist work. But yeah, we're asking our medical applicants to show all of this when our suburban um students don't have to do that. So. You know, we've been going back and forth with this a lot because, you know, you know, I had a little bit of like um. Pushback from this for various reasons, you know, because some people wanted to make sure there was a good fit and are people gonna be excellent academically? And I get that, but we can be um, you know, trying to talk about being an anti racist program and then have inequity, be inequitable ways to get into the program. So we removed the actual. Grades this year um and let us know recommendations, all those other extras things as part of your regular application process. That district may require other things once they get to your queue, but at least to apply, we remove those barriers. And then in addition, we actually have school choice announced the first thing, first time as well. Where the parents can pick up to three school communities that they can apply to or the general medical program. And that's really helpful in a couple of ways because one, if you're an alum of your community, before people used to say like, I want to go to, I want to go to Cohasset, I graduated from there. But before you would just go anywhere. Now you can actually choose your medical community because you have ties to it, extended family, alumni communities. Uh people that know Elisa and she's doing something that her church recruitment, because I know the director and I know what's gonna happen there. I know someone that's gonna take it of my baby. So yeah, so there's, you know, so now that's also known.
If you if you remember uh Elisa, Josh Bowles, and I attended uh Metro Spotlight.
The showcase.
The showcase. Showcase uh earlier in the fall uh specifically to talk about.
Yeah, it was, I couldn't even say, and I was trying to get to the micro quantum. Story in the globe about it, that we change our admissions policy, come and find out more and come and meet the districts. So now they get special seasons.
It's a nice conversation about the value of Cohasset education. What was, what was just inside to continue with a medical program?
Well, thank you. That's a very wholesome answer. Um and uh really, really instructive. The other thing is striking, I'll just say, is, you know, the, some of the changes that you've talked about, just that you went over the past couple of years. Thinking through uh application process for districts, you know, changing the application process for individual students. These are big changes and it seems to be that you're implementing it very smoothly. So that's a credit to the.
Math medical program. There wasn't like, it wasn't the same thing. But he agreed. Yeah.
Um not to say it wasn't a lot of work, but um it 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 seems to work. So um anyway, thank you very much.
Right? So that's what I keep telling them eventually, people said, okay, let's do it. But you know, people like, it's hard to change. Fifty seven years of history of how this is as usual. So I'm like, okay, we can't, we can't be leaving this work and then be in bias in our own entry points.
Very well. I wanted to express my appreciation on behalf of myself and the committee for allowing us this opportunity and privilege to come here. And to uh to have you speak to us and and see the uh great facility here. So uh thank you and thanks for allowing us to be part of the medical program.
Chin, if I could just add, uh thank you to Millie. Uh and we've spoken about. The importance of parents stepping up and making a difference. I think there's some synergy here because. School community, that's exactly what you do and you should know that Millie was a Medco parent.
I am a Medco parent.
You are a Medco parent, correct? So she's a representation of that action that really created Medco. Where it was a grassroots uh carpool um system before it became what what it is known today. So. And uh we're enormously proud uh in Cohasset to be a uh a Medco program. It's what drew me in. I have a response to. To Cohasset and you're really blessed to be able to have Elisa with us who's and um I think is this year nineteen, thank you. But I, and to steal uh to really add on to what Chin, I mean, the question when the column said uh regarding the um. The the importance of uh like uh sort of a grassroots uh issue. It's just, it's, I I think that um. It's not just the forty six students we have from Boston who come in and to steal the um. Wonderful uh Needham superintendent's uh phrase is that we don't have forty six Metro students. We actually in Cohasset have almost fifteen hundred. Uh Metro students because it's truly a program that balances uh both cultures and uh and vibes for everyone involved. So.
Again, it's a nice one over here that reference because the people in the community. Will be our ad really understand that everybody that there is a medical teacher, some medical student, you're a medical district. And what does that mean? That kind of pride, you know, and when you were saying about. Me being a mother in Brooklyn, I was in Brooklyn. Um I mean, I was a mother before I got this job. And you know, in terms of like, well, we're working with another acronym called the PACT program. Parents and families change together. So we're gonna try to organize our own parents to make sure that they also can be leaders in this work. And for example. When I was just a parent there before I got this job. You know, because Michael was there and I was a parent there, they never celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, never. And this is Brooklyn, like never in the school system. So when I saw that, that I didn't see myself, I'm actually represented in that, I went to meet with the superintendent. I'll say, parent. This is why the the benefit of the medical program, which you have some diversity of thought, you might have had a blind spot and you didn't know. And then for Hispanic Heritage Month, we changed the school menu every single Tuesday with a Latin American meal at every single school. Every single school in Brooklyn got a Brooklyn, appreciate Latino Heritage Month with all of the flags and we got a banner for every single school. We did a scavenger hunt in every single school. For the for the kids to kind of like learn and then they had gift cards to take to this through the PTO. Um you know, and then I spoke to them about the history curriculum, how I didn't see myself represented there in the Spanish books. It was just Mexico or Spain. It wasn't Dominican Republic. You know, my kid got a um got an assignment two times. I had two children in medical. We raised a part in Boston about the same assignment after I complained, which is how do you know, please defend slavery? What are the benefits of slavery? And my my kids were so torn with that assignment that they were almost in tears. But my point is that now with the medical grant, I spoke to assistant superintendent in Brooklyn. And they remember that incident? When you were a principal at my school, then she got elevated to assistant um superintendent. Why did she use the medical money and do a source of studies curriculum audit? It's cost them a ton of money. A hundred and something thousand and they used the medical grant for it. And basically the medical program just funded their biggest equity audit and source of studies. So these are like examples of where we're there. Somebody might have something that you didn't think about it like, oh, wow, yeah, that's a blind spot. And then basically it was an easy fix and it was just the parents speaking up. It doesn't have to always be confrontational, but speaking up, you know, how do we work with you to try to change something?
What you're doing with that question uh.
Thank you, everybody. So many years, so we're gonna.
It's. Yes. Move on. Um so we've got, we're gonna introduce our invited guests. Um I think we'll turn it over to uh Ms. Lisa, Ms. Carl.
I don't know how you follow after all of that. Like what, what more do I have to say, right?
You live it and you live it every day.
So um before I actually give my little spiel, I'm gonna actually ask, and I have here some time, so let me get, since this is. February first, the beginning of Black History Month, I'm just gonna give a little bit of black history, gonna talk about Monia Cass Boulevard, which is not too far from here. Um and so I'm gonna have her come give um us a little lesson and then I'll come back up and talk a little bit.
Um Monia Cass Boulevard is located in Roxbury, Massachusetts, and it serves the black and brown communities of Roxbury. In nineteen eighty one, the city of Boston opened Monia Cass Boulevard in Ubean Square. The city of Boston created this area because of Monia's hard work and dedication to the people in this community. Monia Cass was born on June sixteen, eighteen ninety six in Richmond, Virginia. As a young girl, she moved to Boston. But after her mother died, she moved back to Virginia. Where her aunt had custody over. It was only after high school that she moved back to Boston and this is where she started her activism. Monia volunteered helping the community center. She joined many organizations like the N W A C P. Brotherhood of Sleeping Hard Warriors. And the Massachusetts Advisory Committee for the Health. Monia Cass and her site has had a major impact on the black and brown community. Monia spent her life advocating for the black community. In fact, her first time organizing an event, when she was when she was helping black women to register and cast their vote in nineteen twenty. She became the N W A C president of the Boston chapter. As the N W A C president, she organized demonstrations against segregation and disadvantages that black and brown children face in the Boston public school system. Monia Cass has had an impact on medical as well. In nineteen sixty three, Ruth Bassett, one of medical's founders. Testified before the Boston School Committee to express the inequalities between black and white students. But the committee was not convinced. Since Monia was the N W A C's, N W A C P president at the time. She helped Ruth and others be able to express their concerns to the committee. Monia Cass Boulevard adds to the richness of the community that is Ubean Square. It is surrounded by restaurants, buildings, schools and stores that connect people every day. It connects, intersects and unites people. Monia Cass had and still has an impact on the Roxbury community. She spent her life advocating and helping mothers, children and people of color. This site represents and honors the legacy of Monia Cass. People should know the history behind this hidden figure. And future generations should learn about Monia and be able to use it as a fuel for aspirations and goals they may have. Before I end, I want to leave you all with a motto that Monia live by. If we cannot do great things, we can do small things in a great way.
Alrighty, I think it's so important for us to learn about our history and I think so often we don't hear about. Some of the histories just in this very area. Monia Cass is a major thoroughfare from the um the highway straight over to Tremont. So it's really important for us to kind of get to know our history and I think it's important as well because um. I was thinking about just the the fact that I've been in Cohasset for twenty two years. I know I don't look older. But um I think it's important that we recognize, we often say. Um diversity, but we think of it in terms of black or white. And so as I sat there, I was like, you know, we have to get off of that thought because. When we think of diversity, it's so much bigger than just our skin color. And so I thought, why don't we have an event? So I'm doing a recruitment today. Um we are gonna have a multi cultural event in Cohasset on April thirteenth. I am inviting the entire Cohasset community, all families to participate in this event. What we're doing is we're asking families to simply tell us a little bit about yourself. Set up a table in the middle high school, tell us about yourself and share a little bit of who you are. Now, you all know recently Cohasset has been kind of like under a cloud. Um there's been a lot of sadness that has happened. Um and not just Cohasset, but you know, recently all around the world, there's a lot of sadness that is happening. And so I think this would be a great way for us to come together and kind of celebrate who we are as a community. So yes, I'm so proud of the medical program. I'm proud of being able to have students. Who come from Boston to share their experience with the students who live in Cohasset. We're all Cohasset students. We're all Cohasset medical, as. Um Millie had said. And so I think it's important for us to celebrate on this particular day. And so on April thirteenth, I'm gonna ask you. In your family history, what is that one thing that you want to share with us? That you want everybody in the district to be able to, you know, see about you? I don't know you, I, my family is from Bermuda, so maybe I'll have a a table that has, that represents that part of my life. Maybe you'll have a table that represents, I don't know where you're from, but you'll have a table that represents that. So if there's a little Italian in there or Irish or whatever it is, that little piece of culture that represents who you are. Because if you really look at it, there's a lot of seasoning in Cohasset. It's not just salt and it's not just pepper. There's some paprika, there's some turmeric, there's some Jamaican jerk spices, a little bit of everything. And we need to be able to bring it out. So that we can celebrate because we need some, we need some joy. Um not too long ago, I think it was last year maybe, um one of the principals came up with, bring up, bring up, bring back the joy. And so let's keep the joy by sharing who we are. And so I'm actually, um we've been recruited. So if you're interested. Um it's myself and Jenna give into a um the middle school English teacher. So we are spearheading the committee, but we actually have, right now, we have seven other parents from Cohasset. Or from Boston who are going to participate on the committee. So by all means, if anybody wants to join, we are not saying no. Um right now, we've also um. Uh contracted with Origination, which is a. Um dance company here in Boston. They're the company, we kind of like the culmination of the event. Um but we really want to be able to celebrate who we are and to share that. And as we said before, keep some of the joy. So I am looking forward to seeing that day and seeing all of you there. Seeing all of you there with a table that celebrates who you are. So yeah, pull out your phones, get your camera. Put it on your calendar, right? I mean, not your camera, pull out your calendar and put it on your calendar. April thirteenth, it'll be from six to seven thirty, probably from six to eight. And we want to celebrate not just. Who we are, both, you know, through dance and spoken word, but also through, you know, cultural traditions, food. Just a little bit of everything. And so I think it's really important that um that we keep the joy coming up. And so I think it's really important that, that we keep the joy, I mean, and recognize that diversity is not just black and white. So I hope that you take me up on my, on my offer. And I hope to see your names on my R I D, saying that yes, I'm gonna be a part of the committee. And that whatever we need, that the school committee, school committee would be right behind us, I'm sure. We are right there to help promote this, alright? So please, thank you.
The questions come from the committee.
Should I have asked how much you could have given? It can be whatever you want it to be. So we'll, oh, we'll also have some T-shirts. Last year, I'm sorry. Last year, the diversity committee, the diversity club in the high school. The students came together and put together a sticker. We even took that sticker and put it on a T-shirt, and so you all will get to see that as well. So by all means, you know, hit me up if you want to purchase one or whatever, because we would welcome that as well.
So we'll need money for the event, right? So what, where, how, are you, is that. Divisioning, doing that privately, or are you gonna make a request for the committee to do that?
So we've actually written a grant to get some of the, so Origination is gonna be covered through the cultural grant that we got from Mecca. So and we have some of the other pieces that have already been covered through the grant. Okay, so when we come together on Friday, we have a meeting on Friday, our first meeting is on Friday at seven o'clock. If Zion's doing so quickly, if you're interested, call me or email me and I'll send you the link. So that we can discuss some of the other things that we need and then I can mention them.
That's ten AM on, on Friday.
This Friday. The event is April thirteenth. It's an evening event, yes.
I just wanna add one thing, I, I love the, especially in the town of Cass, the emphasis on the paprikas. And the, they're not just black and white, because, you know, being in this, this time, my, my wife, as you know, is on the P S O. And you've heard about the event. And we were talking about the, the paprikas of the world, and I actually learned some cultural things about friends that I didn't know about, just because we've been talking about this event. So, you know, making sure it's a, that it's a, a open environment for all cultures, because sometimes people feel like, oh, this really isn't about my culture.
Right.
And so, you know, I think this is a phenomenal event and allows Cohasset to see, even though that pie graph looks very, very small.
Yes.
And actually there are gradients in there, there's different things, and so there's, there's a lot of way to, of course, to learn about each other. I think this is a fantastic event and I very much appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. And like I said, I, I think so often because we think of it as black or white. We forget that there's so many other pieces. And so it's time for us to kind of celebrate that, you know, as much as I, I wish I could bring in, you know, a thousand more students of color into Cohasset. That's not realistic, but what I can do is get to know what other culture is mixed up in all of what Cohasset is. So that, you know, we can celebrate that and let people know, we're not just plain, you know, we do have some spice. It's not this one, right? So, so I, like I said, I welcome all of you to really join in. I've been at the leadership team as well. Going to have a table, they share a little bit about themselves. What better way to get to know folks? You know what I'm saying? So I welcome you and thank you.
Please be in touch with what you need from, from us.
I will certainly.
Thank you very much. I think that concludes our invited guests towards the presentation. So we'll move on to school updates. We have a combined, I heard, school news and keep you learning, I guess.
We do, yes.
It's a special combination, so. Thank you very much.
We do, and I just want to point out that the, the cultural event happening and all, everything that was spoken of is so central to us. But teaching plan, and today with leadership, we reviewed where we were with us, as we do periodically. And it was nice to see all of this work happening to, to ensure that we really talk about culture. That we embrace culture and that we look at our practices throughout the district. In terms of how we're including everyone, everything, everything that works to enhance diversity, equity, inclusion. We do frequent learning walks throughout the district and leadership team to ensure that everyone in a classroom is accepted as part of the community. And if you remember, one of the things that we highlighted early on about cultural responsive teaching. Was the idea of having explicit instruction. Really looking at data from all students in the room to see how they're reacting to the explicit instruction. And then building classroom communities. That is at the center of all cultural responsive teaching. So we're continuing that, but we thought that today, because it is February first, which is the beginning of Black History Month. Then we would review a bit about what we're doing for Black History Month at each of the. I thought it was a very appropriate time to do so. And I'll actually turn it over to Dr. Skollins to talk about some of these, and we also have some really neat events happening just over the last few days. That we want to highlight as well, so go ahead, Dr. Skollins, and I'll jump in as, as we need to.
So first, just some collaborations happening. We have, today is World Read Aloud Day, it's been around for a while. And so the middle school, eighth graders and sixth and seventh graders too, I think went down, am I right?
Down to Osford and then the government high school bit as well.
And then the high school, if you can see, they also, they went down today to the National Honor Society as well as the Diversity Club. And then on top of that, we have Read Across America, which is the month of March. But they're going to also be doing it through this month of February related to Black History Month. Different books with the students, and so it's been kind of fun. So today, I'll, I'll shoot some more pictures and move on. So actually, I'm wrong, I thought it was sixth and seventh grades today, it was eighth graders. So at World Read Aloud Day today down at Osford, and you can see the kids coming through the door with the teachers. And it was really, really fun and those middle schoolers were amazing. They, they were, it was if they were back at Osford, because so many of them, of course, were students there. So teachers got to see their former students. There wasn't one student that wasn't engaged. They were laughing and smiling, reading, young ones were just in awe, you could just see their faces just working out. And there, you could see how embroiled they were. It was really, really fun.
There was practice that went into this too beforehand, the eighth graders really looked at the literature they were reading, so they were very well prepared. And the, the look in the kindergarten, specifically kindergarten, their eyes as they looked up at the, you know, a big student. And then it was such a nice experience because it was hard to tell who was getting more. And then the staff, the staff was able to meet staff that they have seen very little of. Because of their different, different, disparate jobs in action, so it was just wonderful, great, great collaboration.
It was really nice. On the top corner, Principal Farrell was reading a book to the whole cafeteria. So while those children were having lunch, so that was really fun. And you can see one of the classes down here. With the students and they were getting pictures of all of them on the stairs, but the kids were so, they were all so embroiled. And then here was some of the National Honor Society. And the Diversity Club, so they actually came in and read, so it was a little bit different, you can see a whole class experience. So they went around with some different books that they had chosen to read to the students and then picture of those kids.
And not only does this really point towards cultural responsive teaching and diversity, equity, inclusion. But it also increases student voice, the, the idea that the, this was led by our diversity clubs. Is a fabulous sign of student voice really showing itself in a, you know, work.
And it's gonna continue on, it's not just today, so they're going to continue to think about different ways, and they already have some scheduling. And even some of the teachers, though, speaking with one of the, the English teacher, the high, from the eighth grade, and she was saying, I think we could create something. So that maybe we create some sort of system, yeah, for the seniors, youngsters, so it was really nice. Yeah, there was a lot of enthusiasm today, a lot of joy. And so here's some work done by Deer Hill students around Martin Luther King Day. And there's writing on the, you can't really see, you can see those spectacular ties.
Yeah.
But there is writing actually on those pages, you can't really see, here's one of their writings. Some of the things that are happening at the high school are, they'll be doing some daily history announcements. And they'll have music that's break and lunch related to black cultures. And then they're having African-American education or decorating contest. And embracing our differences, they'll be doing the diversity role design contests, it's gonna happen. And then school by assembly is going to have on fifteenth for the eighteenth. Oh, I was only writing on someone's thing, sorry, I took it off someone.
We've done this, we did this before, it's a, it's a really collaborative effort. We have our own Cohasset police involved with it. And we have, I, I don't know who you have as panelists this time, but last time was former Mecca students.
So it's a state, so we'll have a former student graduated from Cohasset. He was a Boston police officer, but he's now a Boston fireman. We have another parent who graduated, and both of the, these individuals also have kids currently in the district. Is a, a police dispatch here in Boston. So we'll have, you know, a nice little group, and then a colleague of mine who is. A D E I person in another district, so she's gonna come.
And it really sponsors a powerful discussion and is very meaningful to the students. So, you know, you're all, you're all certainly invited to that, and it's a, it's a welcomed part of our efforts. Thank you for all the work, Lisa, with that too.
And then the middle school, you can see, I kind of just made it a little clearer on the left-hand side. This is from the middle school, their Black History Month. That's calendar, so they have also the utility door decorating. For the best decorated classroom door for Black History Month and look at competitions. So they can demonstrate their knowledge of Black History Month during lunch. That's something that they do periodically at lunchtime, so they're just gonna have a focus on the Black History. They're having a Black History Month writing contest. And then they are having film festival, and they'll have great specific films for the theme of black resistance. And then Read Across America, they're great, on March second, have everything in the, about reading books, excuse me, reading books. With that theme of resistance, so that what kind of literature they have. Um, in the elementary, they have a group coming in, thanks to the P S O. Or Hip Hop promotes positivity assembly, there's lots of writing to month, lots of readings. They are looking at different black people who have. You know, been super successful in arts, science and math. I'm picturing there, we will be going in. Sullivan and I will be going down to the, on the big stairs to read aloud a beautiful book that was in the feed. Mrs. Farrell's doing the same, and then they're focused with some videos. And then some of the things, and they kind of dovetails all into some of this because of the culture of responsive teaching, there are some other things that are happening. We're looking at our literature in our school libraries and our classroom libraries to make sure that we have. Literature that's culturally inclusive, and here's just some of the things that are happening at the elementary school and the middle school. You can see different displays of books. Areas, a lot of research is happening, this is one particular project by grade five, and we are studying the Negro. So actually even making a trading cards, which is what you see there, the research and writing. Middle school's had a couple of, we had one author already, and then they will be actually having another author. So Tiffany Jewel has already met with the school and she, her books are listed below. They, we have my racist kids, some other books. And then Lisa Springfellow is a former student who's in Cohasset and then Co. And current Boston public school teacher, and she has written a column of wishes, and so she will be with the. Today, right?
Yeah.
Really impressive.
Yeah, exactly, they graduate, she graduated from Cohasset. She started in, at Deer Hill.
Oh, I apologize.
So she showed a picture to, to the students of her. I was like, you are so brave. See her at eight years old, her Osford yearbook picture.
And then there's a lot of sharing experiences, so Augustine is a E S P at Deer Hill. So she was sharing what it was like for her, the refugee from Vietnam, coming here at the age of nine. And shared that with, with students, and then the Sullivan family was at Osford and Deer Hill. And sharing about the building of the, so their games, they just did a really lovely job sharing it all. And then lots of just signs of belonging, and such an important part of being culturally responsive and inclusive. Is making sure that people see or feel that they are, that they belong. So those are some pictures, and then these are just some things that we've been working on around the teaching and learning part of it. The diversity and inclusive clubs at the Mill High School. They, like I already said, we're really trying to look at our libraries within our classrooms in our schools to make sure that there's a diverse. A diverse selection for students to look at. We're using the New York University Steinhardt School culturally responsive, pick them scorecards while we're getting new materials. And then there is, this we already talked about, Tiffany Jewel and students. And the elementary, there's an Islamic tiles art project. The school, the music program is really focusing on a lot of different types of music, in particular around. Songs from Africa, listening to those traditional musics, jazz. Use of non, of preferred pronouns and the use of non-gender binding language such as, you know, equal. Girls and boys, and then really focusing on addition of core and supplemental texts. Texts with texts within the curriculum that represent and honor and promote our true diversity. Really constantly now looking at what are we bringing into the, what already exists, and then what do we need to add to it? And then some of the professional development that's happening or will happen. Remember Dr. Ridenford, she's been with us a couple of times to really look at how do we use data. Dr. Sullivan already talked about that, to support culture response and inclusive practices. Part of the NEAS, they study, self-study phase has really a lens for them, students. Really having the staff look at, you know, what are we doing around cultural response and this inclusivity? And they're looking at our, as they kind of self-study themselves. The middle school has really used the culture responsive, inclusive lens to look at, break them, that's in the focus of their building basic. Activities, professional development and all our updates in our folder. We have our new literacy approach at the elementary, really rooted in cultural responsive and inclusive practices and materials. Diversity there, the high school. English department, they did a book club and on cultural responsive teaching for what they believe in, learners, tools of equity. And so that was something that they decided that they want to, to research. And then A P Language and Composition Diversity Project that promotes and honors diverse identities. And then we have a department chair who is on the Department of Ed's curate, which is a panel that looks at refiller. Resources, and so having them on that is really helpful because they are really focused on making sure that the texts that. The curator is recommending really represent variety, the variety of cultures and perspectives. There's a lot, I just kind of highlighted. There's a lot, I just kind of highlighted.
It's my thinker hurts. Taking notes for my M M, my Monday message, a lot of diversity work, congratulations. All levels, at all levels.
Questions, comments from the committee?
I haven't commented, Mr. Keaney. Yes, um, yeah, that was a great presentation. I also choose, I I, one of the things we've been struggling as a committee is trying to get more parent involvement, trying to get their voices. You know, um, I just wanted to let the community know that we're available, not only. And committees, but we're available to talk anytime to, and so I I think it's important that. They know that they have a voice in their education. And so if it comes down to uh any of the facilities or a- any kind of things that you guys, uh parents have concerns with. I just want them to know that we listen, we are a committee of parents. I know we're on the school clean, but we're, so as you spoke about this whole thing started with parents. You you got five parents, so I would like you to reach out to the community and let them know that we're all in this together. We represent them as well as the students.
And then just um, just a quick check in on some of the other initiatives, so we know we had talked about M C A S and some of the interaction plan, one of the things that. Um, we are working on at the, at all levels, but in particular, the English department, the high school. Um, has really grabbed hold of creating um. A way to have two things happen, one, that they have a format to be able to practice using the tools that they would use during the M C A S. Right, so that expandable box, how do you highlight, all those kinds of things. Um, there is a platform out there that actually our I T, um Lindsay Kay, one of our instructional technology educators has found out about. So we're looking at that to maybe feel a little simpler than having to actually create the template ourselves. Um, something called edulastic, so that seems to maybe help. Um, because there was a real strong sense when I met with the English department around. Um, making sure that, one, they kind of take that practice off the table in the sense of making sure that the kids have those skills to be able to. Manage the system, but also then looking at how they're asking the question. Look how they're asking students to respond and then giving them back, so that's been um, they. They were so amazing, all the groups were really great to work with, but I think they stuck out to me because it was the Thursday before vacation week. Um, and their enthusiasm could not have been any greater around how do we do this? Because we really looked at the day, we looked at what was happening and um it was just a really nice forum for us to talk about and they jumped right on it, so. Um, so that's really nice, um and that's happening, um. That's how, it's gonna happen at all levels, but it was really nice to see the high school really grab sort of it. How they're gonna, so they're, how they're gonna ask their questions, so they're actually changing it and working together to um. To refocus their questions on how they're asking the students.
And you have your curriculum work happening.
Yeah, and then tomorrow we have, yes, tomorrow we have our uh math, our second meeting for our curriculum review committee for math. And we met a week and a half ago, so for arts and um and they're moving along, so they're uh they're great groups, so.
I have an edulastic question.
Yeah.
Um, do you say that they are, like, they're already using it as a. They're just experimenting with it?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, are you using it and I like it and I think it really. Um. Not only is it collaborative, like there are, you know, you can, there are publicly available questions, I mean quizzes in format. Um, but I also like that when a child takes an assessment, whether it's, you know. Formative or summative, when they get something wrong, you can reassign all the things they got wrong, so you can review it and the frustration of like. You know, going back and redoing, I think a test kind of sucks. But if you can just target a few questions and say, let's do this, the rest of it stays there, you don't have a chance of getting something wrong, you're already got right. And just target it and we can work on that, I feel like it's just a much more productive way to relook at work and get towards mastery.
Yeah.
Instead of like, let's flow through the whole thing again, I just think it's a really nice tool. Um, and to be practicing those online platforms as well, so that they feel more familiar going into M C A S, it's good to feel like that.
Yeah.
Like it's great is um in that, that, in that format, that.
Right.
Platform, so I really like using edulast, I don't use it a lot right now as a reading specialist, but when I was teaching um. Uh remotely.
Yeah.
We used it frequently in math, you know, in English and there's, you know, every subject is available, you're subject.
Right.
Imported and then you can share it out and assign different versions to differentiate for different kids, so I feel like it really does a lot of what we're looking for in.
That's really good to hear about, yeah, because I really wasn't aware of it.
Yeah, I, I like it a lot, I mean, there's a learning curve, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Plastic could use a branding work.
In in the niche.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's a great tool, it's a great tool.
Either uh thoughts, comments, questions, committee? Great, thank you, that concludes the uh combined school updates, teaching and learning. Excellent, so we'll move into our agenda items, that budget resources and governance and either. Officially standing items, um I think we do have some transportation news, so that's all over you.
Yeah, just to make a uh, just a note about transportation, if anyone's watching out there and they've watched this, I I just want to thank everyone for the patience. This is a a top order deal with our driver shortage, um. Uh, we we knew we weren't delivering a product that we were proud of because of it and I do believe that. The uh recent addition of uh first students buses that were going to be able to be very secure in less than a year. That itself is the most important uh part of my message, the other part would be that we're this week just tweaking things a bit. Just to make sure that we um can deal with bus uh overcrowding properly and set routes that are proper and then. The app that I know is popular, the Stop Finder will need to adjust to get going. We realized that this, this uh solve hasn't solved all of the problems with the buses being crowded. We do have a lot of folks on a bus, a lot of kids using our buses. But it's a big step in the right direction and I think it's a step uh to now delivering a product that we advertised in the first place, so um. Thank you for your patience and uh, you know, thank you to uh our transportation supervisor and also to. Finance and operations, the new man's work at this to make this happen, so.
Yeah, as a, as a parent of a student who's only the first student bus, um it seems to have um integrated well. I think we had a, there were maybe some route delay on the first day as people learning routes, which is expected. Um, so uh, so all all told, speaking as a parent, I was impressed that it um. It worked smoothly and I think we do want to keep working on the Stop Finder app.
Yes.
They um, that is a very, it became very clear this week just how valuable that is. And so, well, we do want to keep doing that and then, you know, as long as you're around, continue to look at. You know, if there's other ways to utilize our extra resources to help spread out our uh transportation load. Um, you know, that's, that's all we can ask, I think you're weathering a difficult storm, thank you.
Thank you, and one of the great things about this, um having these extra buses, that's we are. Uh, director of transportation supervisor transportation rather to. Go on routes with folks to make sure that the routes are um moving safe, as safe as they can. Uh, to troubleshoot uh any problems that might be out there and to really devote time and energy. Doing things like making sure we're at that level of possible with our bus nodes. And quite frankly, he was so strong, uh I would be, that that'd be driving and doing it, that it was impossible for him to do that. Uh, now you should see the expected benefits of that.
Right. Um, and then uh food service, any updates on the food service side?
It's, well, you have, we do have a lunch coming up, but that might be.
Yeah.
Next section, but you mentioned it now.
Oh, it's good, yeah.
Fifteenth or sixteenth? I can't remember.
Sixteenth or sixteen.
Yeah, we're excited about that, uh just still having conversations about hiring chef at the school. And trying to uh bring some of those services to the schools where, again, the the updated school lunch line has been a bit.
They get, yeah.
They get and uh, we'll continue with food services. That will, that will be moved down the whole tour of lunches.
Yeah.
And every time, I think we've got a good piece of joy, the schools and the kids, what they go, what their experiences. To try to make it better and better in spring.
Great. Um, I don't think there's a, both the school facilities.
Yeah, we met last night.
The the school facilities?
Yeah. Well, Craig wants to. I'm rolling, yeah. And and this is important because um I, Craig um. Was a big advocate of trying to get this thing. For the school facilities committee that was basically in nineteen seventy six. Is in our charter. Uh, but it is a great way to go about it because it involves everybody in the community now. Right, so we have some, the town moderator, the select board and us, all we all. Introduce people to that committee, so Craig and I have been there for the last couple of years. It's really made a lot of uh, a lot of, I I've never seen a committee work so. Due diligence to get us like in line for a new school. Uh, because we felt like the middle high school wasn't up to the Cohasset standards, uh we found that most of our schools were not being loved yet. So last night's meeting was pretty much uh, for me, it was, it was, we we got to really figure out. What really happens in Cohasset, you know, we we renovated the schools twenty years ago, however, we didn't update them like we should. And everybody was on the assumption that somebody was in charge, so last night's meeting was. Who's in charge? And what we've been doing in the past is we would ask the principals to go out and see what they need, then put it on a list and then send it over. While principals aren't, they don't know what the roof leaks or, you know, the, they're, you know, mechanical engineers of the, the boiler. I mean, this is kind of ridiculous, so um last night's meeting was pretty much like, who's in charge of it? So I think it was a really good understanding that we need to, like, go ahead and hire somebody that's in charge of the buildings. So we're gonna work together with those committees to try to reel everybody in and say, okay, what do we need? Because we did it, we did sign out a study, we spent two hundred fifty thousand dollars to find out what's wrong with our schools, we have that now. So now we have, uh, you know, this is exactly what this need. And so we will, we've been in uh some of the folks from the uh. Capital budget and they were very helped, so it was a really good synergy in the room, so I I gotta tell you. Out of all the meet, I'm in a lot of committees, last time was a big move class, so we got to say. And thank you, Craig.
Sure, so uh just to add on to that briefly, so we have a warned article. The annual town meeting that's going to be requesting one point five million dollars for feasibility study for a. To explore the possibility of a new, the construction of a middle high school, was it too big?
Well, renovate is one point five.
Yeah, one point five is the request, so uh that needs to go through capital budget. And then it needs to go through advisory, then a, then a select court and they can all decide whether or not they support that or not. And then regardless of what their position is, we'll go to the the voters on uh annual town meeting and I'm always referring to that existing condition study that. Uh, that articulated all the issues with each building and the school facilities committees now, you know, sort of. Sort of compartmentalizing these issues and, you know, there's new school possibility and then there's also the existing maintenance and we're, we're. Working, we're working with capital budget and addressing those and shipping those, which are bringing away those, creating process to ship away those systematically. Over the years to make sure that it's moving to the maintenance, they need, uh in addition to exploring whether or not they have new facility altogether or something.
Does bifurcation of that, uh new school versus the existing maintenance schools. I I know we have both you and Mr. Keaney as members of the school facilities committee. But I'd like to talk about at some point, um whether or not we should also have a budget resources department. For that review as well, actually some committee of the school.
So I I think that the, they were going to work with at the subcommittee level.
Okay.
Facilities.
Yeah.
Um, to work with school committee uh from, I I suggested doing it at subcommittee level.
Yeah.
So the school facilities committee is, is going to do that, that, so I'm sure there's, they're all going to be in touch with uh, we're six and a five and so it's.
Yeah, that would be ten and I, yeah, we had talked about, um, we'd like to, we have a second meeting on the fifteenth. Fifteen to sixteen, the next meeting?
Um, no.
No, I'm talking about the school facility business, we agreed to have a meeting.
I thought that we said that at the other month.
Okay.
We had to do, we had to meet with all these different entities and say there would be not much to do.
So we need to do it, we need to do a subcommittee meeting prior to next month's meeting.
Finance facilities.
Yes, and we'd like to bring in Jason as well and they try to have taken some security. So prior to the.
Prior to the next school service.
Okay, so we want to do it probably before. Before or after five? Well, it depends on whether. Yeah. This, I think, every vacation is the twenty second.
It is, when we get back, February's gonna play over.
Yes, we gotta. The other thing we're gonna discuss that is a, um, a recommendation for this meeting on strategies related to our budget for spring.
Okay, awesome.
And we'll come back with a proposal.
Great.
Very excited.
Um, I conclude this, both for the school facilities committee. Spring up within there and the good curse, we're also reports from other um subcommittees, but um. I will uh open forth any other subcommittees and understand on who might get our coming.
We are going to have a very romantic meeting on Valentine's Day.
Lovely policy meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
No one goes out to dinner between four thirty and five thirty, it's gotta be fine. Um, we'll be meeting and uh, and are going to be working towards that overhaul of getting all of those policies dated. So then we have a fresh start, I think, for our policy binder. We had a wellness meeting though. That was good, we have three students on there.
Yeah.
As you said, you're on a lot of committee.
Yeah, that, that was a really fun committee day too. Yeah.
Because we, we're, we're moving.
Yeah, we are moving and I'll tell you honestly, yeah, let's start and talk about everything. The three students that live in there, they, they. They're unbelievable, looking right in the eye, I tell you, this is, this is.
Sophos.
So, yeah, uh, and some of the, what, what, some of the concerns, I wish it, some of the concerns were. That's uh, trying to get more recess time that we talked about.
Well, they're wondering about that, what did that look like, and then there was a lot of talk on their part around um. P E and some of the choices, right, they wanted some other things around like yoga and some of those different kinds of experiences. They really want more of project adventure because we have that rock wall, so.
Yeah, they want to be able to use it. More people certified.
Yeah, so.
We also talked to the after school programs that uh we're trying to keep the school open till six at night so that we can have a stipend for a teacher to. Uh, run sports, you know, we feel like uh, you know, pick up basketball or dodgeball or something just to keep the kids motivated during the day. And we're also talking about maybe uh, um, getting somebody in there. Tutoring at the school later, so these are some things that he's been talking.
Right.
That we can kind of elevate to the next level, however, it was really, it was really a good meeting. You know, it's nice because it's, it's, it's kid, students, teachers, parents, all in a group talking about wellness. And it was, it flew by.
It does, it really, it goes fast.
Yeah.
And we looked at the website and looked at ways that, you know, that we thought maybe we could enhance some areas and.
Yeah, the clubs, we talked about um.
Posting that up and.
Yeah, like, what does a kid do, like, join a club, and we have like twenty something clubs that you don't even know about. So it's kind of like, we need to try to find a way to educate and motivate kids to get into these clubs. And so that was like, did you sign up for a club with a question marks, we kind of got all these great ideas from that.
Yeah, it was like, it was really, it's an amazing group. They do, they do at the beginning, yeah, they do, they all speak to it, well, we're, I don't know if they do fair necessarily, except that during orientation, everybody comes up and talks about. And there's always reminders about it.
They're expanding greatly.
Yeah.
The last three years at Deer Hill and those ones. Really, the, the.
Almost like the enrichment programs, right, but yeah, I still, when they're, yeah, it was the clubs for the high.
We do have um, another thing that we have coming up is uh, there. Oh, the.
Oh, credit for life.
Finance for life, right, credit for life. Credit for life is where we.
Money for life.
It's for seniors and invite the community and and um, everybody kind of uh has a, a, a table. And I think I signed up to the wellness tables, so there's, there's spots available, Brian Scott did a great job. Of putting in where you could um volunteer. So if it was, if it was like nutrition, which, which I put my name on for, but if there's anything else, it would either close the committee or. So there are spots, I think real estate needs a few and uh, February can. So there are spots, I think real estate needs a few and, uh, February tenth.
It's strength.
They're setting up there.
Yeah.
The newsletters.
All right, um, so I think that moves on to our school committee governance, uh, there are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Uh, we do have, uh, some sets of minutes, thank you, Mr. Carr.
Sorry, Ruby, first of all, our secret book, and this wonderful, yeah, it's been great and it's really me, I, it's a long time, these are very lengthy. Um, there are, they are by no means perfect, but I think it captures everything that we're, I'm trying to, uh, trying to do the, um. So I think, and maybe, could you just double check on paper, Kyle, could you, could I? Maybe Jennifer could have a look and see.
I'll check with.
Those dates from before are still missing, but.
Your, what was, what was?
Oh, Jennifer sent us, it's actually the committee, yeah. Gosh, you brought up some.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do that, um.
It's the one where the sound was on with our student, the two minutes, we sort of left that blank, so if anybody wants to put something there.
So, but, uh, but in front of us, we have four sets of minutes from, uh, November sixteenth, December seventh, January fourth, and January eighteenth. Um, these were provided in advance, although not too far in advance, so I will ask if the, uh, no, that was my, that was, that was, um, more on, more on my end. Um, but, um, we'll ask if the committee's had a chance to review them, and if so, are there any comments? And if there aren't any comments, uh, then I'll ask for a motion to approve, but first, any comments, questions, concerns about the minutes?
On any of them?
Any of them. If you go to the light, after you have them, you go minute by minute, if you'd like.
Very, very funny, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I just have like thirty pages on, on, um, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The third and the last page, uh, it starts, the pair of stuff that Mr. McClellan says. Um, it reads currently, Mr. McClellan says, the school committee takes this fairly approach to this, I think it should read, takes a fairly critical approach.
Okay.
That is how you talk, though? I will edit it in the minute. So, um, okay, great, uh, so any other, any other edits from the, um. From the committee? If not, I will entertain a motion to, we'll, we'll just, uh, have a motion to, um, approve them en masse, so all four sets subject to the revision, move, I discussed.
So, how many motions have been?
I have a motion for Mr. Carr, we have a second, second, Craig's second for Mr. McCollin, uh, all in favor? Uh, any opposed, no, uh, the, the minutes are hereby approved as amended, uh, from Mr. McCollin on respect for January eighteenth minutes. So we have now approved the minutes, uh, only two more agenda items remain, the next one is our customary discussion of any future agenda items that we want to bring forth. Any future agenda items are.
A review of after school program?
Yeah.
Because that's, that is one of our, our subcommittees at all the rooms.
I actually don't think we've had that at committee level, so that might be an interesting thing to do.
Sure, yeah.
I'm curious about two things, one is when we will be discussing the calendar for next year?
Yes.
That I'm just so calendar excited.
Chairman, um, Dial and I have not.
Well, we, we should, yeah, there will be twelve months. So, we, we, we should, calendar will be, will be on there.
Would you go to the start of school, obviously?
Correct, it's very well advertised.
Yes, yeah, we're, we're doing everything we're finding, playing around.
Um, the other is something that we talked about earlier in the year and I feel like now we're kind of halfway through-ish, um, just having any sort of. Um, kind of sharing out by like students or teachers about, um, the, the ELA and the reader's workshop. I think that was quite a big discussion at the beginning of the year, I've seen what it looks like from the homework end of things with my older kids, but I would love to have that shared.
Dipstick.
Uh, what are teachers feeling about it, where are they learning, if kids, you know, we always love when students come in and share, but whatever's going to be the most appropriate. Um, way to do that.
Makes a nice academic update.
Yeah, and I could speak up, and we're hearing some honest feedback about what, what teachers are experiencing with the program.
That's great, and we didn't, we didn't talk about that way back when, so I think that's great to bring that back.
They said, you know, they've been able to do, you, you answered.
I think it's great. All right.
Choose a budget and resource, we, we have a few minutes, not even the next meeting, but the one towards the end of the month. We'd love to come back with a potential strategy, um, in terms of how we might, um, uh, engage with our community around helping to pass our budget.
Yes.
A little bit more than just a committee update, if we could have five minutes. We got experience, uh, February fifteenth, and I believe we don't need to get until the first of March.
Yeah, when we have three meetings in March, so.
First week of March, people.
Yeah.
My apologies, I will be absent on the fifteenth.
Oh, then we're.
One fifteen, twenty-nine, only one name.
And then you'll be absent on the. It's okay.
Yeah.
Yes, could we also hear, will you do a presentation with studio staff at some point, I want to hear, since, uh, what, uh. They feel they are lacking in resources, I want to hear what they feel are challenges to them and I also want to explore, you know, what their current processes are. Sure that we don't, as we tend to, ensure that we have clean, well-functioning facilities for our students.
I think that could come in, um, under, uh, Shiloh's report and, uh, she could add that for sure.
Be on my, my pay grade, Dr. Sullivan, however.
Dial, we'll, we'll work that out, we do think, uh.
One other request, as you develop the count, our next calendar, if our friends from that go and have this back, can we get on their games back again? I think this was a lot of fun, yeah.
The once a year, you know, April, September, that would be wonderful.
Would this be the first time cohesive, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think great.
It's on real estate.
If we plan well enough, I'll give you some blackened food. In the, in the better weather, we can maybe do a little walk and tour and do a little bit. Like deliver many posts, that's like an hour and a half before for dinner, a little outside, I'm touring and learning about the little different figures from this community. And then go into a meeting and invite Danis to come too and make with you guys.
Yeah. So, uh, any other future agenda items? Hearing none, uh, there is no reason to move to executive session, and with that, I will add, uh, again, motion to adjourn, so. Uh, motion for Mr. McCollin, second about a Saint Orange, all in favor? No opposed, uh, the motion carries and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.